Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of May 9th, 2011. Said notice was posted at the Andrews Southern Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, the North Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal. Mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun on May 9th, 2011, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please stand for a moment of silence and close.
(inaudible) (inaudible) to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Nick Chakor, here. Ms. Wood, thank you. Mr. Kocinski.
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mrs. Rusa.
Here.
Mr. Solera.
Here.
Mrs. Kazado.
Here.
Mr. Cookta.
Here.
Do I have the motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All of you in favor?
Aye.
Conferenced. Minutes are approved. Correspondents?
I have two pieces of correspondence for the members of the Board of Education. One is from the Nutley Irish American Association. They are interested in having the Board of Education participate in their parade on March 3rd. If you are available and would like to do so, you need to assemble at 12 noon and you could contact Mrs. Kukusa for the details. Second piece of correspondence is from Mayor Tucci. The 93rd Memorial Day Parade is going to be held on May 28th, 2012, and the Board of Education is invited to participate in this event as well. And for more information and if you are available to march in that parade, again, please contact Mrs. Kukusa for the details.
Thank you. Mr. Lesbick?
(inaudible). Thank you, Mr. Cookta. I will try and keep it brief through the number of presentations this evening. Just to catch up on a couple of important and noteworthy pieces. The first is just to comment on something that wasn't brief but to elaborate a little further. We had a visit during the week of February 13th from Mr. Jeffrey Rogan, who is a Nutley resident and also affiliated with the Jersey Symphony Orchestra. He brought with him Tim Range, who's a Wilton App Orchestra conductor. They wrote a letter to the district following the visit. I just want to read a brief segment of it. I'm writing to let you know what we observed. Both of us travel over the United States working with groups at all levels. Ninety-five percent of all school music groups in the United States rarely exhibit what we saw in Nutley High School and the rehearsal last week, and that is the focused desire and the work ethic. When Mr. Mayo talks, those kids listen. His work on listening and fundamentals was a joy to see. Those students play with a great sense of ensemble, and they are working diligently to play with quality sound. This is missed in so many classrooms nationwide but not enough. I thought it was important to bring that to everyone's attention. Second piece of business is to follow up with our STEM, the Board of Education membership to STEM. Last week, all of our information was sent to the organization in preparation for the upcoming reverse auction. If we're moving forward with that. I also had another high note. Our wrestling team had some successes, as most people probably see by now in the newspaper. Five of our wrestlers, which is the most ever, have moved on to compete in Atlantic City this year for the state finals. In his fifth year as head coach, Coach DiPiani was selected as region coach, which makes him one of seven that are up for Culture of the Year as far as the state's concerned. We'll know that on Sunday. Overall, the team finished 19-4, and these are the kinds of accomplishments in all sports and all activities, co-curriculums that we wanted to be celebrating. And obviously, we'll bring those students here when that happens. An update on positions. We closed all three postings for the head school principal, for the director of special services, and for the coordinator of world language. We have a minimum of 20 to 25 application qualified applicants for each. We've already begun the process of screening. We're going to go through the multiple rounds that we have with every position in the path, where we'll get to meet the recommended candidates as always. And our goal is to make sure that by the second official meeting, we have approved all three, so that at the latest, they can start July 1st with an initial point. Student information system and our web resources, our P's, have also closed. We're, as you have to know, three-course the way through the SIS. Moving forward, we'll be bringing in four separate groups, as we talked about, including community stakeholders as well as teachers, secretaries, and other staff members. In order to receive these presentations and give explanations, we will, of course, include board members and parents, both for both of them. Quick update on the race to the top three application. We did, we were one of these selected LEAs from the state. This is again, just, it's an initial acceptance. We don't have to present our scope of work by the end of March. We were increased based on the number of districts that turned down the opportunity to apply. Monies for the districts that accepted was increased, so we will follow with that. We'll be going through the act of committee. Moving forward with that again, and seeing where that takes us, we want to make sure we've had great collaboration with the administrators and the teachers as far as everyone wanting to be at the table as these momentous changes continue to happen in the state. Our strategic planning initiative. We're up to our values and mission statement. Our next meeting is this Thursday. Dr. LeBert will be back. We'll be tuning forward to groups that have been working on their own, and each group is finding, I guess, their own personality. We'll be bringing everybody back together this Thursday. And just a last piece, we've talked about conversations here in our district, and I'm focused on data. I'm sure you'll see even just from each of the three presentations tonight, we're committed to making that happen, making sure we're constantly talking about data, and that we're keeping everyone informed and involved in the conversation.
Thank you. Mrs. Ayman, Secretary of State.
I'm going to reserve my report until tonight.
Speaking of presentations, first one is on HIB.
We are, yeah, we probably should move over this, but I want to see. We're required by the new statutes, which again, Mr. Capella, we didn't speak to that, but they're getting a buy-in and report to the Board, not just about what HIB is and how it's going, but specifics as far as numbers and quizzes, and what we're learning as a district. So, I can read before he speaks, one of Mr. Capella and all of his precious colleagues, they've done an immense amount of work since July and before that, to make sure that we were prepared. Both for me, legislation, but more importantly, to make sure we're supporting all the students in the community. And so, Mr. Capella, thanks so much. I'll hand over this to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Capella. Not only am I the anti-bullying coordinator for the district, but I'm also the student assistance coordinator for John Walker Middle School. I've been here for 12 years, and I was appointed last spring to be the anti-bullying coordinator as per the new anti-bullying bill of rights. Throughout my presentation this evening, I'll be using the term "HIB" instead of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as an abbreviation. Before we discuss anything else, just want to go over a brief overview of what is the definition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as per the anti-bullying bill of rights and our Board policy. All of this stuff can be found on our district website under HIB resources. HIB, it could be any gesture, written verbal, physical act, electronic communication. Historically, it's always been considered possibly that it's been a pattern of incidents that could be seen as HIB. However, as per the new law, it could also be a single act, in a single incident. It could be reason perceived, motivated by any actual or perceived characteristic or by any other distinguishing characteristic. Could take place on school property, in a school-sponsored function, on a school bus, or off school grounds. To be off school ground, though, has to substantially disrupt or interfere with the orderly operation of the school and/or the rights of pupils. Something that happens outside of school, and all the students are talking about it in school. The person to be the target, the victim, cannot concentrate in the classroom. Student comes down to maybe the principal's office or the counselor's office, is disrupting their educational process. It affects them emotionally, physically, puts them in harm, or could damage their property. Can insult the mean and pupil or group of pupils, and basically creates a hostile educational environment which does interfere with their learning process. As I spoke a minute ago, characteristics, protected characteristics, these are the protected characteristics as per anti-bullying bill of rights, characteristics that are protected under the school bullying law. In preparing for September, September 1st is when our policy became into effect. As I said, I was appointed the anti-bullying coordinator. We also, each principal appointed an anti-bullying specialist, which I have listed on the next slide, as well as a school safety team was appointed, which is anti-bullying specialist, which leads the team. Teacher or teachers, be a parent, well, it is, by law, it is a parent that's appointed, as well as administrator, principal, vice-principal. However, in our investigation, the parent is not privy to any information of any cases that we are investigating. The anti-bullying specialist, we have Mrs. Tanal, who's the student assistance coordinator at four schools. She's also the anti-bullying specialist at Lincoln School and at Ragcliffe. We have Ms. Franacola, who is a teacher at Spring Garden, she's a specialist. Mrs. Nigley at Washington, Mrs. Kamali, they are all anti-bullying specialists, and those three are teachers as well. Mrs. Janes, who's a guidance counselor at John Walker Middle School, she's a specialist as well, along with Mrs. Cassily, who is the student assistance coordinator at Nutley High School. Once again, to prepare for the new HIB law, all the anti-bullying specialists attended a training, I believe it was April and May of last year. Montclair State University held three weekends in a row consecutive that there was presentations on the new anti-bullying law, prevention programs, investigation procedures to assist all the anti-bullying specialists and anyone who was on the team. There was also a presentation by the Department of Education, however, that I believe was held after, once school started. Things that we did as a team over the summer, we familiarized ourselves with the policy and the procedures. We developed forms. Along there is a HIB incident report form, which we developed. There is also a HIB summary form, which we forwarded to Mr. Lazovic, and that's where he creates his documentation for the Board of Education as well as parents. We put all this information together, the team, put that together. We also worked extensively on putting together an articulation day for the staff. On September 9th, we had a district-wide training for the whole of teachers, secretaries who could attend, and aides. We also worked over the summer on a week of respect, different activities from K to 12, what we could do to help initiate the anti-bullying initiative. Once again, we had our articulation day on September 9th, a two-hour presentation for all staff. Since then, I also conducted six additional training sessions, and that included bus drivers, bus aides, custodians, maintenance, buildings and grounds, the technology department, any secretaries who were unable to be the September 9th one, office aides, contracted service providers, which included cafeteria workers, occupational therapists, physical therapists, volunteers, we had coaches that were out of district as well, that were trained throughout those six sessions. During Week of Respect, we did different activities at each level. And since then, we've done classroom lessons. Teachers have been very, very cooperative, very cooperative. They have come to us and initiated different things that they've done in the classroom, which we are documenting, so when we have to present or provide documentation to the Department of Ed, we have a list of items that we have presented to them, things that we've done as a district. The principals have been extremely, extremely supportive. Once a month, I meet with anti-bullying specialists. This is a new law, and a lot of times there comes quirks and things that, you know, that aren't really in the law that we have to address. So, we address anything from putting together new programs, how can we tweak our forms, procedures? If there's any cases, we collaborate with each other to come up with different ideas to address different situations that do arise throughout the course of the school year. After work, I'm putting together a resource page on the district website. If you go to nutleyschools.org, top right-hand corner is my name, is the resource page, which contains the HIB incident report form, policies that retain to HIB, as well as websites that can be valuable resources. Also on there is the presentation, which I provided to staff, as well as the parent workshop, which was conducted in January. Done this program over so many times, I wanted to ask if anyone had any questions. The following information is basically from September through December. We have not included the statistics, we have not included from January and on. So far, I'm sorry, I have difficulty seeing it. We've had 117 cases reported that were investigated. The breakdown to the right, high school at 36, middle school at 33, and you can see the elementary schools as well, as well as the, we also had the percentage of what it is as a total. We've got 117 cases that were reported and investigated. I'm going to break, I decided to break this up into elementary level. If you can see here, the breakdown by schools, we have to the left, the green, to the left we have Lincoln School, we have 12 cases reported. The bar to the right, which is supposed to be a little darker, you can't see, we have two cases that were confirmed HIB. Ragcliffe School, we have five cases, we had one confirmed. Spring Garden, we had six cases with one confirmed HIB, Washington, 13 cases with two HIB confirmed, and Yenacol, 12 cases with four confirmed HIBs. Part of the report, the Department of Education, we have to break it down according to what was the protected characteristic. If there was an incident of confirmed HIB, we have to break it down to what protected characteristic. So, this is the breakdown of which cases, how many cases of HIB were motivated by these protected characteristics. There's an asterisk here, some of the cases may not be related to an actual characteristic. Someone could bully someone for no reason. It doesn't have to be based upon one of the protected characteristics. Or, at the bottom, you see the bottom, it says other distinguishing characteristic. It could have been someone called someone, you know, "You're a jerk, you're stupid," and pushed them for no reason. The secondary level, high school, we had 36 cases investigated, where we have 20 confirmed HIBs. The high school, I'm sorry, the middle school, we had 33 cases investigated, where eight of them were considered confirmed HIBs. And then we break it down by school, we broke it down basically by secondary level, as you can see. And throughout the course of the school year, one of the things that we do, as I said, there's a school safety team. The goal of the school safety team is twofold. One is to investigate cases of HIB, as well as what can we do to prevent it, and to intervene or prevent it. So, one of the things that we are looking into is, and what are some of the patterns? And if there's a consistent case of maybe sexual orientation, one of our laws is to do programs at the schools based upon what are our findings.
My only question, you've probably covered. Just 20 children in the high school seems a little high from September till December, you said, that were confirmed HIBs, right?
Correct.
With the 20 that were confirmed, do you, I think it would just be nice to clarify, then you meet with them, with the parents, and then someone?
It could be, it could be a range of responses. It could be anything from, there could be in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, meeting with Mrs. Cassily. It could also be meeting with any school psychologist, or if a student has a special education.
Parents, that's true.
Yes, parents are contacted. It could be parent meetings, meetings with administrators. There could be part of, it could be at the high school, you can have it at the elementary level. We've used students as part of the peer mentoring program, connected them with them. Some have done special assignments. We've had a case where teachers monitoring. Everything that we've done, any small intervention, we document. There's so many things that we are doing that we're not getting credit for. Changing schedules, seats, if there's something in the locker room, maybe we need to change their seating in the locker room. If there's an incident where, you know, students have to be monitored, or someone has to be escorted, we will do that. There could be, our responses are at different levels. There could be individual level, there could be a classroom level, where it could be an assignment in the classroom or presentation. There could be a whole school presentation, which we've got classrooms, schools, as well as we could do a district-wide program. So, there's different levels of responses, but we have to be, you know, very creative in intervening. Depending upon, there's so many different cases, there's different things that we've done.
I know the presentation that you gave at the middle school, there were a nice turnout of teachers, obviously, they need to be informed and know about that. Didn't see a big turnout of parents. Are we getting this word out to the parents on what is available to them to help their children from K through 12, as far as bullying is concerned?
Yes.
Put out some literature?
Well, we have the resource manual up on the district website, beginning of the school year. Principals did it differently, some of them put a backpack, the policy. At the middle school, I believe Mr. Klitchell, part of their schedule, back to school night, put on the backside of their schedule, I believe, do not be on at the high school level.
PTOs were also sending out emails to the parents.
Yeah. I've reached out to the PT Council, I forget her name, she's been very receptive. And like I said, the principals have been excellent, have been excellent in assisting us, because it's the law and it's what we have to do. In saying that, on January 27th, Almunche School District filed a complaint to the State Department of Education. Due to the investigations, due to the documentation, and all the required training, they filed a complaint, saying that it's an unfunded mandate on public schools. And the council on local mandates hasn't agreed with them. So, in 60 days, once their official ruling comes down, if it's not funded by the state, the law will expire. Now, I don't know what that means. Some parts of it, or all of it, I'm not really sure where the state is going with this. But today is February 27th, we'll find out in another 30 days. So, this ruling was on a Friday, and there was all over the news on Saturday. So, where we go from here, where the state goes, I'm not really sure, but I know for us, with a Nutley school district, we're going to continue to do what we do because our students are the most important thing to us. So, we're not going to change, you know, despite the fact that there may be a change in the law, but I'm not sure where they're going with this. What could be our needs? Through my training, through Montclair State University, Department of Education, one thing I always harping on was adopting a research-based prevention program. I think myself and the anti-bullying specialists throughout the district have done a fantastic job in putting together programs, district-wide, classroom, individual, working with students. But one of the things that a lot of the anti-bullying advocates are always harping on is this O'Bearis program, it's a bullying prevention program. It's an excellent, it's an excellent program, so I think that's one of the things that we need to look at. At the end of the year, I'll be getting together with all of the anti-bullying specialists, Mr. Lazovic, and trying to get all the principals together to assess how we did as a district. The other concern is to assess the current structure of anti-bullying staff. One of the concerns we had, just want to go, let me just go back. One of the biggest concerns we have is with our anti-bullying specialists. As I said, Mrs. Tanal, she's a student assistance coordinator for four schools, and she's also the anti-bullying specialist for two schools, which requires her not only to be in part of each investigation, but then to write a summary about each investigation. Extremely time-consuming. Spring Garden, Washington, Yenacol are specialists, they're teachers. Every time there's a case that has to be investigated, they're leaving their classroom, and they are investigating, they're doing summaries, making phone calls, and it's extremely time-consuming. And a lot of people are concerned about this unfunded mandate, what is the financial strain on measures? I'm also concerned is what's happened to the students, their educational process. Mrs. Franacola, Mrs. Nigley, Mrs. Kamali, they're excellent. Not only are they classroom teachers, but they're also guidance counselors, certified guidance counselors. And as per the state law, requires that someone has to be a guidance counselor, school psychologist, or someone similarly trained. And they've done a fantastic job picking a boy by the horns, I want to commend them. So, and Mrs. Cassily, all of them, you know, everyone has responsibilities that we're just adding on. As the anti-bullying specialist, I spent a tremendous amount of time as a coordinator with doing programs like this, and I'm also still balancing my role as the student assistance coordinator, which is to provide the prevention services for students that are in need, that could possibly be a victim, or an alleged aggressor. So, those are some of our concerns. One of the things that we've discussed with Mr. Lazovic is possibly tweaking their schedule. I'm not really sure how, at elementary level, I've been in middle school for 12 years, specials or however, we're looking at possibly changing their schedule as well. But these are some of the concerns that we will be addressing. But the main thing, which I just want to reiterate, is that I feel that our program so far this year has been successful, and we're intervening, and we're doing a fantastic job in educating our students. Is every case being reported? I would hope so, but it is a new law, and some teachers could be ambivalent, because it's new and there's trial error, especially at the elementary level. You know, I hear Joe, it's, they call him a jerk. Do I have to write that up? So, these are the certain situations that we're dealing with, especially at the elementary level, to address. And throughout the course of the year, like I said, the principals, Mr. Lazovic, they've been wonderful in assisting us. The resource page is here. Top right-hand corner, as per the law, my name has to be on the district website. This is actually the HIB page, with listed below is everyone's name and all the anti-bullying specialists, all their contact information, and the definition, incident report form, which not only staff could complete, but parents could also complete and report it to us as well. We have policies, as well as if you scroll down, that's actually a picture, so you can't scroll, the presentation for parents, as well as a presentation for staff, and everyone can keep on going down, and it's also the resources, the websites. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you for, I want to open this up. I just want to thank you for your presentation, and I'm glad to hear that the constitutionality of the law is not a condition for continuing to serve the students in this fashion, discussion.
Yes. Mr. Capella, you had said a few times that it's been successful. And sometimes, you don't know how successful you are until years later, when you get the opportunity to see a victim, who the teachers and the administration and yourself are treating. It just so happens, the timing of this is interesting, because Ms. Russo and I, last night, I think it was last night, we were at an event, and we happened to meet the parents and a student, actually a student victim of bullying, excuse me, a couple of years ago. And some of you weren't on the board then, but this incident was horrific, absolutely horrific, where a young student at that time was thinking of taking her own life. What I'm driving at is your intervention, and the intervention of the administration and the teachers of this school district, not only say- and the teachers of this school district, not only saved a child's life, but last night, we had an opportunity to see this child in person again, and in fact, it was you, Ms. Russo, who was rather excited, and justifiedly so, with the words, "Look at the smile on this kid, look at the difference in this child," and you all know who I'm speaking about. So have you been successful? Far beyond what you could ever imagine. I applaud you and the teachers of this district and the administrators, because at least one we know of. Job well done.
Thank you.
Any other? Thank you. Next presentation, student performance.
Is that where it's at?
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to present to you, share with you some data on our SAT, AP, and PSAT student performance. We're going to highlight some of the key components of the data for you, as well as our course of action, based upon what this data is showing us. You'll notice as we go through, we're using graphs and charts to present the data, but it's going to help us look at the numbers in picture format. The first area we're going to talk about is student, is SAT performance. In the area of critical reading, you'll notice that our students are performing at, we're just slightly below the mean. In the area of mathematics, again, the same, our students are performing at, are just below the past five years. And again, in writing, we're right at the, our SAT scores. In the area of SAT subject tests, if you look at the chart, it's broken down into 09, 10, the first three columns, and then 10, 11. The number of tests taken, they report anything from five tests on. The reason why they don't report the mean, or scores underneath five, because you might be able to figure out which students took the test and which students were performing in what areas. So if you look down and across, for example, literature, 13 students took the test. That was 60% of our total, and their average score was 659. In the area of advanced placement, again, they're reporting scores for students, five students or more who took these assessments. We're looking at for scores of three or better in each of these areas. So if you look, again, it's 09, 10 data and 10, 11 data. In the area of Studio 2, no, that's not example, in the area of drawing. I can't, I can't see. It's the whole of the, but it's on the other side.
Hey Phil.
Phil.
Can we turn, take the mic, the lights off, please?
In the area of biology, you'll see that in the 09, 10 school year, we had 25 students take the assessment. That was 18% of our total. Nine of those students scored a one, one of those students scored a two, and then moving forward, we have eight, six, and one, scoring a three, four, or five. If you move to the next school year, we have 15 students taking biology tests. Again, 12% of our total students taking AP assessments. We have a score of two, a one, five, a three, and a four. If you look, we're going down from bio-mexas science, 10 students took it, over half of those students scored a one, and then three. So 80% of our students are scoring below what would be expected for a naked class to count for them. Again, let's look at U.S. history, another area where we have quite a few students taking the test. We had 25 students taking the exam, which is 18% of our population. Eight students scored a one or a two, and then again, 12, five, and zero. And again, into year 10, 11, 17 students took the assessment. And you'll see as you go through that our scores are pretty evenly distributed. What we would like to see is our students scoring in the three, four, and five range, partly in the four and five range, but we do have a number of students that are scoring across the board. And again, in advanced placement, we're looking at five-year comparison. The dark blue is the total number of exams that were taken during each AP year. The light blue is the total number of students who received a three, four, or five on the assessments. So we're consistently across the board, looking at about upper 60 to lower 70% of our students passing our AP exams. In the year 07, 08, that was the year that we required any student who was taking an AP exam to, AP force, to sit for the AP exam. You'll notice that our number of students jump dressed, leave the number taking it to 397, but again, only 151 of our students scored a three or better. So in that year, based upon these results, only 38% of our students were performing in the range that we would like them to perform for our AP assessments. Looking at PSAT performance, this is for grade 11 students, we had 189 students take the assessment. If you look at the bar, you'll notice, this is our school, this is our school performance. The top end of the bar is the highest performing student in the class, in that assessment. The low end of the bar is the lowest performing student in the assessment. This blue box is our prime mean and our standard deviation of student scores. If you look, you'll see that our highest performing student is still lower performing than our state and national average. And yet, even at the low end, we're either right on this area, just above the state
Down by the left, have a look at the right finger, the right, the right finger.
That's the area of critical reading, and the area of mathematics. Again, our highest performing student is performing worse than the highest performing students in the state and the nation. And again, the same thing in writing skills. Again, these are grade 11 students taking the PSAT. One of the things that PSAT does for us is look at college readiness indicators. This is based upon the student scores on each section of our PSAT. This represents the students, what the students should receive to be considered on a college-ready 41.8% of our juniors who are taking the PSAT are considered to be college-ready. The national average is 50.4%. These students are students who are considered to be prepared and ready to participate in college-level courses. And again, we're performing below the national average. Next, we're going to look at PSAT performance, and the first area is critical reading. Looking at this chart, again, we're going to continue to look at the numbers and pictures. With this first bar, the entire bar is all students who will be taking the assessment. The area in blue is the performance of nutley students. The top arrow is where the state performance is, and the bottom arrow is where the national performance is. If you look, going down through these areas, again, this is critical writing, reading, going down, we are consistently performing below the state and the national average. That one, we're right on the state. These assessments are broken up into strands. They're very similar to the strands that are on the Common Core and the Core Curriculum Content Standards, so as we're looking at our PSAT scores, it would be comparable to, our curriculum is also broken down here. In the area of mathematics for PSAT, again, the same chart, look at nutley student performance. Numbers and operations were below state and national. Algebra and functions, geometry and measurement, and data and statistics, we'll write about We continue in mathematics, problem-solving, representation, reasoning, connections and communication. Again, we're consistently performing below. In the area of writing for PSAT scores. The write-up, the area of metagramma, phrases and clauses, correct reform sentences, and managing order. Again, in each area, at or below. Looking at the PSAT performance for 10th grade students, same chart as last time. You'll notice in the area of critical reading, our highest performing student on the assessment is still performing below the state and national. Again, in the area of mathematics, our highest performing is below. And again, in writing skills. At the other end of the scale, our lowest performing student is performing well below what is the state and national average. Mathematics were a little bit higher, and again, writing skills were below. Again, looking at college readiness indicator, this is for our sophomores who are taking the PSAT assessment. 33.6 of our sophomores taking the PSAT are college-ready. The national average for sophomores taking the PSAT to be college-ready is 53.5%. Usually, your sophomores were taking your PSAT, or your students who are higher performing or possibly more ready for these assessments, and our students who are taking them again are 20% below the national averages for being college-ready. Grade 10, critical reading sections of PSAT, same chart as before, again, nutley goes up to the blue. Each section were performing below, and in some areas, well below what the state and Grade 10 mathematics, again, same thing. Continuation of math, problem-solving, representation. Our reasoning is similar to what we saw on the grade 11 in the PSAT, our connections and our communication. And in the area of grade 10 writing on the PSAT, managing word choice, grammatical structure, again, as we go down. Each strand were performing below what the state and national averages. For our course of action, based upon what we're seeing, just this one set of data that we're sharing with you tonight, there's four areas that we're going to look at. Informed conversation, academic plan, communications plan, and our resources for staff, students, and parents. In the area of informed communication, we need to use this data to continue to have discussions with the public, with the board, with our staff, with our administrators, so that we make sure that we're using the data appropriately and we're on the right track to help our students to achieve and succeed. We need to be talking about all kinds of data with all different stakeholders for our students. We need to use our data from our internal assessments, which we'll talk a little bit more about under the academic plan, as well as from the external anchors, some of what you saw here tonight, the SAT, PSAT, as well as other assessments like the NJAS. We have information from this data that we need to look at and use to help drive our curricular decisions as we're moving forward. We need to use our student performance data to have conversations with, as I said, with the public, with our teachers, with our administrators, and we also need to involve our students in this. In the area of our academic plan, there's four main areas I just want to talk briefly about. The first is curriculum. There are three components of our curriculum that we need to discuss with academic plan. The first is our curriculum writing. We need to make sure that our curriculum is meeting state standards and our national standards, the Common Core and Core Curriculum Content Standards. From there, we need to make sure that the teachers have training in that curriculum, understand how to use it and how to implement it in their classroom. As part of a curriculum rewrite, we need to look at the resources that we have available to our students and to our staff in the district. Maybe textbook teaching materials, programs that we have in place to help our students learn. Again, we have to make sure that these programs and resources that we have are meeting our goals and our expectations for our students. Combined with our curriculum writing and our resources, we need to look at the training that we're providing. We need to make sure our teachers are, can effectively use our curriculum, that they have the resources and materials that they need to help their students to be successful, and we provide training on any resources or teaching techniques that we're using in our classrooms. The second component of the academic plan is our evaluation system. We're currently using a new evaluation system with a focus on practice. We're looking at the result of our practice on student performance. Our discussions on our evaluation system, where we're meeting with teachers, is on student performance and practice in the classroom, and how we can help support our staff to better serve our students. The next area in our academic plan is common assessment. In terms of common assessment, we've been working with students, for students, with staff at all grade levels and content areas, to provide a common assessment. What we're planning on doing is sometime from March to May, is for every student in the district to take at least one common assessment. From that, we're going to use that data to help analyze what we're doing within our district and help provide the teachers with feedback and the administrators to help support the learning. And then finally, in another term, in terms of the academic plan, one major thing that we did here this year was our program of studies, both at the high school, which we had a presentation on, it was two months ago during the board meeting, and then also the middle school program of studies, which will be presented at the next board meeting. By creating our program of studies for both the high school and the middle school, it was a huge first step for us, both to have our plan placed for both buildings, but then also to be able to redefine and raise the rigor, and raise our expectations for what we want to have in our classrooms. In terms of our communication plan, if our students are going to be successful, we must engage all of the stakeholders in their education. That includes the parents, the board, the teachers, the administrators, and of course, our students. For our articulation plan, we need to involve all of our students and parents K-12. They need to be aware of the data, they need to know what this means and how it's interpreted, We need to obtain data and be able to analyze that, and then also be able to present that to the public, as well as to our teachers and administrators, in a way that will help us be able to use it to drive our instruction. We need to articulate our plan for future educational programs and practices, based upon what our data is showing us. We need to use our data to make sure that what we're doing in the classroom is working, and if it's not working, our data will show us that, and then we need to have another plan as to how we're going to, to change our course to make sure that we're doing what's best for our students. And then finally, in terms of resources for staff, students, and parents, we're going to start with our data as our number one resource. We need to get the right data to the right people at the right time. We need to make sure that the data is clearly understood by staff, parents, and other stakeholders. We're going to have a number of resources be brought into the district to help us not only analyze our data, but help us deliver our programs forward. Some of those, those resources are technology-based resources. Those resources are going to help our students, our parents, our staff, our administrators, all to do what's best for our students. We need to ensure that we have the technology and the resources, and the resources, again, besides technology, is what's available to the teachers and the students in the classroom, so that we can support our communication and our academic needs. And moving forward, you'll see that we're going to be spending money on curriculum, resources, and professional development. So, as you see that upcoming board meetings, that we may be purchasing items or giving you more facilitation of the balance of what we're planning to do on our classrooms, just need to be aware that it's coming from the data. This presentation will be available on the website for everyone, and then also, please expect to see more data presentations at future board meetings.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Thank you. Ms. James?
Can you turn the lights off, please? I'm going to stop.
Tonight, I'm going to give you a presentation on the 2012, 2013 spending of budgets, which the Board of Education will be adopting later on in the season in the way that it's financed.
The budget process began in the fall of 2011. There were numerous meetings held, both with the administrators and coordinators of the district, as well as the central office of administration and the finance committee. We spent time examining each and every line of the budget this year. The reason for that is because we needed to make sure that we were meeting the budget's objective. The objective that we had designed was to ensure that the budget meets the academic goals and increase of student performance. This is actually directly following the presentation that was made in secret by Ms. Valani. We asked ourselves questions. How can we be spending smarter? What are we currently purchasing that can be shifted to a more effective product and an end result? The first piece of information that we gather in creating the budget is to determine how much revenue that we are actually going to have to spend. So in the first column, you see the revised revenues for the current year that we are operating under, the revenue that we are projecting for 2012, '13, and the final column will give you the increase or decrease. So the first line that feeds the budget is the fund balance. If you were here in January and you heard the auditor's report, we ended the year June 30th, 2011 with a surplus. Districts are allowed to keep a 2% surplus. Anything in excess of that goes to fund the following year's budget. So we have $242,000 to fund the 2012, '13 budget. However, that was a reduction of about $300,000 from what we had in the year before. The next line is the tax level. We are operating under a 2% tax cap. A board is committed to keeping within that 2% cap, so that gives us an increase of $962,000. And we go through the list. We received some revenue from tuition students that come into the district, transportation that we provide to other districts or out-of-place students, what we can earn on interest, miscellaneous revenue from things such as rentals of our facilities, and investment income, and then extraordinary aid. And now comes the big number, the state aid. Up until very late in the day, last Thursday, we were operating under the premise and the hope that our state aid would be at least the same as we received for the current year. And much to our surprise, we received an additional $639,000. The following line is revenue that's generated from the semi-medicate program, and which, if you get down to the total, we have an increase in our revenue of $1.12 million. So where are we with staffing for 2012, '13? We know we are going to be adding some positions to our special services department with an additional teacher and parent professionals. We are going to have a permanent high school principal, director of special services, and coordinator of oral language, so there's a slight increase in salaries to make those permanent positions, as well as the benefits associated to those positions. As far as reductions, the budget currently has a reduction of five secretaries and 12 teachers. More specifics as to exactly which classrooms are going to be impacted, which subjects, which departments will come at the actual public budget presentation in March, because we're still working on those numbers and the impact on various departments, and continuing to meet with the coordinators and the principals in making sure that we're making the right decisions moving forward. We have an impact of new programs and equipment for next year. In line with technology, we need to start doing some refresh of our technology equipment, purchasing classroom resources. Up until this budget, the district has really been cash strapped in their ability to fund new textbook series and online additional classroom resources. So a lot of the additional state aid is going directly into classroom instruction in areas such as this, professional development, as Ms. Valani outlined, and the curriculum writing, to make sure that our curriculum is aligned with the common core standards and also the CUSAC authority and requirements that we have to meet. Soccer applications such as student information system, substitute and personnel recordkeeping system from ASOP, which is on tonight's board agenda, performance matters, and our upgrade of our website and email platform. The additional state aid is also allowing us the opportunity to begin to systematically fund our capital reserve account, so that we can plan for small-scale projects moving forward throughout the district and be able to do things perhaps like replacing auditorium seating and projects of that nature where we don't have to go through tax figures for a referendum. And it will also help us to meet some of our long-term maintenance needs. And then we need to start replenishing some of our maintenance vehicles. They have a lot of wear and tear on them. It's getting to the point where the repairs are exceeding the value of the vehicles, so we're looking to purchase the dump truck with the plow and some small box vans. Our overall expenditures in each category are listed on this slide, going from regular instruction to special ed, other instructional areas, athletics, curricular, school administration, general admin, plant operations, transportation, business services, employee benefits, and capital outlay. Again, the first column is revised figures for the current year we are operating under, where we are projecting for 2012, '13, and the increase or decrease in each of those And that's where we end. Thank you very much. Anyone with more questions?
Thank you, Ms. Daniels, for your presentation. You provided some good insights to where we're heading in this direction. Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, I have one question. Something that I think we might know we talked about. In regard to trying to find ways to save the shared services, especially with the equipment, snow piles, trucks, now can we truly pursue that? I know we've gotten some group cooperation from Police Commissioner Scott Pelly and Commissioner Tucci's department. Can we pursue that to try to save some money and perhaps get those funds in the budget to save some of the staff and personnel? I know all of the members of this board don't want to see anybody go, and that's something we've all committed to. But can we start to look along this line, very aggressively move towards that, to try to save some funding there? Can we do that?
Yes, we are still looking and we are still tweaking these numbers, because this is still the tentative budget, and the budget will still continue to be worked upon from now until March 25th, when we have the public hearing and the board adopts the final budget. So we are still looking into those areas.
Can we have a timeline? Because usually when we say we're looking into it, we do get busy in other areas.
See, one thing, just to make it clear on some of the stuff that Karen talked about, the dump truck, the vans, and we've kind of looked at the used, you know, competitively shock prices, if not, maybe roundabout, by bringing the vehicles. So I mean, we are apparently doing the proper procedures to find the equipment, adequate savings to be added.
Oh, I don't doubt that, but...
That's what I'm saying, some of the stuff that you saw up there is, you know, and I think it's time here that we start talking about some of our shared services, the Oval being one of them. I know that was something that we discussed, I think we discussed a little bit deeper about the township and us working something with the Oval, because they had better means for funding, where we would, we discussed this prior, I don't know if this is the right time. So I think again, but there's things that we have worked on.
But you're driving that trend real good, and what I'm saying is because of what we're up against, the timeline, thirty days, sixty days, twenty days, at least kind of move forward more aggressively, that's what I'm saying.
Can we clarify also the teaching issues that we're not cutting? We'll talk about teaching. I think just, I think we, understanding is wrong, you know, what's being spoken, maybe can we clarify?
Well, that's what we tried to clarify before, and this is a snapshot of the work that we're doing. This is still in fluid. We're required to make the presentations, and so we have to kind of freeze everything and stuff both on the statements and on the planning initiatives and the rest while we're trying to plan for a snapshot, so we can make a presentation. If we were forced to go forward with the budget a few days ago that we could right now, we still have to hash out a lot of specifics to see what transpires between the elementary budget meeting and moving forward. But as far as shared services, again, we've been updating on a regular basis, but we've looked at about a dozen shared services, some of which we've been able to capture and some of which even we can contain payroll and the rest. We've actually investigated and looked to find it wasn't a savings. We're following up again. We have another meeting now coming with Mr. Kirk and trying to get our communications in my time. Mr. Scolera has been helping us out, working with the fire and the police to make sure that we can increase our radios and our security on those issues. A lot of the shared service pieces that none of them are allowing for in that respect, a lot of them are extremely complicated. The SEMA was one of those, and we have moved forward with that, and that, that ended being a big one saving the district there. The bigger issue with a lot of the shared services, like the SEMA, is it's not something that we can truly budget for. For next year, we're not going to realize that until after the budget's been put into print. So it's something that when we can turn around to more professional development or more resources, you know, those are things that we can do in the future, but we can move and create a clip based on the looking to the board. I mean, the encouragement of the board, you guys have been very serious about that, and again, Commissioner Tucci, Scott Pelley, I had, sorry, Equipment Shuck, was in the office the other day, you know, working through things with us, and I've had multiple conversations with Commissioner Evans, especially about the budget and giving his office, so I mean, we're good.
Yeah, I think of course we made numerous comparisons, that this board is working extremely diligent with the talent of it. Certainly, the last thing we want to do is cut any positions. So as much as we can save with the shared services, this board is completely on board. We're doing some of it, you'll hear about in the administrative report, but in the financial report, we're coming together a lot better than we have in the past, so I think...
That's good for the people. We know, but they have to work.
And you also, in looking at the whole picture, you want to optimize your resources, and some of this is just doing that optimizing your resources in the way the teachers are doing it.
Just, I know we have the 26th hearing coming up, and just staying on the same issue, can we find, get a report, though, of, before we go to the public of, not the names of the teachers, but how it's backlit, what classes? I know we're looking at, you know, the teaching sets instead of five, but to find out what the true impact is before we go out to a public hearing for a board briefing, so we can ourselves see where those cuts are and what it's affecting and know they're not affecting any of the students.
We're having our next week's again, I mean, it's the final round, and really tomorrow is tomorrow, and I need to coordinate with the principals to finalize what we need to do with this first round. That will be briefed upon, and we have three committees before the petition, so we, again, as we've always, making sure you have the information deployed. We try to be extremely careful. There are some very difficult decisions that have to be made this year, there are going to be some difficult decisions that have to be made next year. And we're trying to make sure we take every step as we can in a progression to make sure that once we've made a decision, it's the best decision that any given, that you will absolutely know.
No description, we don't need to tell names, I just want to see what we're changing in the classes and how it's affecting what, that's all.
I commend the superintendent on the process and the way he is looking at, you know, even the long term and the short term, it's not just focusing on next year's budget and how we're going to hit next year's budget, but you know, what's the plan and can Frank make these decisions?
And I'm not disagreeing with him, I just wanted to...
I think that, and he's also been, yeah, very open and communicative, he does just do well, I'm sure that's what... Any other discussion? No?
The academic committee met on February 7th, and again, in terms of the presentation this evening, I want to commend and thank Superintendent Lazovic, as well as Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Valani. And needless to say, it was a cause for concern, looking at the baseline data in terms of our lackluster performance, to say the least. And I think in terms of my consideration and amongst, I think, our committee members, this sentiment was also shared, the course of action, and I was very appreciative to see the time and detail that you did put forth tonight in terms of at least preparing and putting forth a multi-pronged strategy in terms of how we're going to hopefully put out this fire, so to speak. And from an academic committee's perspective, you could imagine how alarmed we are with the findings that we're presenting this evening. But again, it's just having that information in front of us, knowing where we need to turn and to put in the adequate resources, and again, given Karen's presentation earlier, how are we going to take these scarce resources and hopefully get the most bang for our bucks, so to speak. Again, we looked at the AP data, which is no surprise, it was an issue that I tried to tackle when I came on as a board member two years ago. We addressed it more currently with our program of studies. So again, I'm hopeful that within next year, if not sooner, we will see some definitive results or at least some positive impact in terms of improving our AP test performance as well as students who actually sit for the exam, because we are being adversely impacted as a district in terms of our performance based on findings that were presented this evening. Ms. Valani also presented the draft of the middle school program of studies, which essentially mirrors that of the high school, particularly the issue with grading, that will be the same across the board for the high school as well as the middle school. And we're also looking in terms of working with our core subject area coordinators to create assessments or rubrics for sixth grade students. And it was interesting, I had a citizen in the community essentially express discontent regarding how we have opened the floodgates for students to actually enter these vector programs. It's similar to the National Society, we saw maybe 60% of our students all making this quote-unquote gold standard of becoming a vector student. So as we move forward, there will be a system and a mechanism put in place to ensure that these students are adequately, essentially given the adequate admission criteria before they actually enter the vector classes. Thanks to the trustee, Martin, we also discussed programs that may offer college courses to high school students, either after school, during the summer months, or on Saturdays. Many of these programs are offered at a reduced rate, I think it was Colwell College that actually offered a program. So in having these conversations with our guidance department, for instance, we met a student who wants to embark upon a very specialized course study, and he or she may actually identify engineering as a course study that they want to pursue while they're in their careers here at Kelly High School. So this is an opportunity for them to take more advanced coursework, whether it's multivarial calculus or what have you, that may not be offered in our core curriculum, at least they have that opportunity to go to local college or community college to take that course. And again, we also brought concerns, the academic community regarding parents, and this textbook issue, again, rears its ugly head in terms of the past board and these work and war campaigns. Now it's an opportunity to take these scarce resources and put them where they're actually needed in terms of increasing academic performance and student achievement. And notwithstanding, I understand that instructors have the options of exploring additional resources to augment their teaching skills, but needless to say, we need to get back to basics, and the fact that we have outdated textbook has been an ongoing issue for our district, so at least the board and some of the administrators are aware of this issue. We just want to move keenly in that direction to, again, put out that fire. Thank you.
Mr. President, the administration committee met recently, and as you'll see on a couple of our resolutions tonight, we appointed the new football coach, head football coach, which I think is an important move forward with us. Certainly has the experience we're looking for, and I'll talk more about that at the appointment time. The ad hoc committee that's ongoing with the choosing our attorney, looking at the attorney, the ad hoc committee has put its findings together, I know the circuit tennis is working on finalizing that, we should have that before you probably have the next meeting or certainly next month. Policies that you've already agreed upon and voted on, spending time at a time updating all of our policies. The meeting again on the 13th... The, uh, we're meeting again on the thirteenth to discuss the, uh, the solar panels that we're looking into, and the consultant that you might be using, and, uh, I, I want to thank my committee, uh, Fred Scolera and Steve Rogers, for the time and effort we've put in, you know, with this new structure, the way you have it now, as you know it, and, and I'm so glad that, um, that Lab and, and Mr. Dancheck and, uh, Vicky Flann and, I think, Debbie Russo are on that academic committee, and along with the superintendent, it's, it's just a great move forward for all of us, and even though the numbers, and I, and I'll speak for myself, but even though the numbers tonight were, were upsetting, I feel more comfortable as a board member, or at least I feel as if I'm getting the true figures, different than I might not have received at other times in my time on board. So, uh, and I know we're looking to move forward with this, I, I applaud the superintendent and seventy, our academic committee, for the work they're doing, all of us, but, um, moving forward with that, I, um, our administration committee is going to meet on the thirteenth instead again, and, uh, we should have some good recommendations coming out of that meeting.
Thank you. The finance committee met on February twenty-first, and we have four items on our agenda. First, uh, our bond council, uh, presented a proposal to refinance our two thousand three and two thousand five bonds, uh, which, these were construction bonds, one for the high school, one for the low school, uh, and, and we pointed out that there is, there are some statutes that govern around this, that you cannot refinance unless the net present value of the savings is at least three percent. They also pointed out that once you exceed that, if, if you do not refinance, you run the risk of, uh, of losing some state aid. So the, the threshold of three percent is so that the bond professionals can't turn portfolio and make money, is the net of their expenses, uh, which are about a hundred fifty thousand if we go forward with this, all covering bond council, auditors, uh, underwriters, financial analysts, and some fees that are in there, state fees, it's all covered, it's been at one number. Uh, so there's a recommendation of the finance committee, uh, the, uh, the finance, the full board has gotten a lot of details on this, we're going to go into closed session shortly, just in case they, they have any, uh, questions on this, in simplistic terms, it's if you refinanced your, uh, your mortgage on your house, uh, and in this case, from about four and a quarter percent down to two and a half percent interest rates, but because it's bonds, it's, it's a series of bonds, it's a lot more complicated than refinancing your house, it's not, it's not a simple, simple process. Second topic was the, uh, budget presentation, pretty much what we saw tonight, when we discussed that in committee, recommend that we look forward with the academic budget. We talked about the rental fees that have been charged, we used the facilities, and Mr. Gaiman's provided a chart which the current, our current fee structure is, and, uh, it's going to be a work in progress to review that, to make sure that, one, we're covering all costs, and two, uh, the commercial, there's used commercial that we are at market, that we receive in market value for our properties. And then finally, we talked about the little church lease, uh, we have a couple of recommendations before, before we go forward with that, uh, some legal issue we've got, and, uh, some wording we've missed that we haven't changed, that is the finance committee. We are at, the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from private discussion pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed the closed executive session at this time, we discuss negotiations and legal requirements for refinancing, uh, school bonds. Be further resolved that the results of the discussion may be covered by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session will exist. So...
Sorry.
His favor. About fifteen minutes or so, I think, we'll be back, we'll minimize, minimize amount of time on here. Anyway... We allow questions or comments on only the regulations addressed in tonight's agenda. Board regulations allow twenty minutes for these communications, as the persons shall be limited to three minutes, and, uh, we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all the information displayed on the topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please always remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board, you're the first person, if you need to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none? Close this section of the meeting.
Yes, Mr. President, regarding academic resolutions one through four, uh, please move forward a statement.
Yes, sir. Discussion. Discussion, call the roll, please.
Mr. Dancheck, Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzitsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Cookta?
Yes. Mr. Kuzitsky, will you move administrative resolution number one?
Yes, Mr. President, I move administration resolution number one, adoption of fire laws, policies, and regu- regulations, as a move.
Sergeant. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dancheck, Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzitsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Cookta?
Yes. Mr. Sizada, will you move finance resolutions one through nineteen and number twenty-three?
Um, Mr. President, I, I move resolutions one through nineteen and twenty-three as written.
Sorry. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck, Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzitsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, uh, I'll all but communication.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Cookta?
Yes, and I'll look if you want to check that, I'll check myself. I have the numbers. Mr. President, yes.
Mr. President, I move resolutions twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two as written.
Gotcha.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck, Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzitsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Cookta?
Yes. Mr. Kuzitsky, will you move personnel resolution number one?
Yes, Mr. President, I move personnel resolution number one, I, I, yeah, I, I move that resolution.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, there's discussion. Um, because of the way these are all piled into, uh, on the, on the following pages, where there's all the personnel that are receiving this extra compensation, and, um, without my glasses, I can't see at all, I can barely see with my glasses on, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that listed in that, um, resolution is the appointment of the new football coach. And, um, the new football coach is Todd Basile, he, uh, the applicant was chosen from a field of twenty-seven applicants through our online system, from his original pool, ten were screened by the recommending administrator, and four went before panel composed of three administrators, one teacher, and the athletic director, which in turn, the final two were brought before the committee of Mr. Rogers, Mr. Scolera, and myself, obviously with the discussion of the athletic director and superintendent, I think we're moving forward with a, uh, a seasoned football coach. He was the assistant football coach, he was the defensive coordinator, under the past football coach, I think he was well, well-mentored, he's a full-time teacher in the Barringer school system, and will be coming forward with us, um, in the new, uh, football year, and I certainly wish him, uh, lots of luck, and maybe Mr. Rogers knows him a little bit better than I do, and that's what we said. Well, then he might not pass at all.
Now Charlie put me in that position. I really didn't have anything prepared, but, uh, Mr. Basile is an excellent coach that's been on our staff with, uh, Coach Nigoborio, uh, highly recommended, um, Steve believes, uh, he has everything it takes to take over his, uh, field of shoes, and I think he'd be a great asset towards the town and our footballing.
There's been a lot of great things happening here in the past year with your presidency, and our new superintendent, but I think the review policy of the way this was done, and the applicants were screened, and went through a process before they came to our committee, you know, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Sizada, I think was excellent, and I was really excited at the last two that were interviewed, I think they were both really, I think we chose the best candidate, but I think the new procedure is great for the school district and doing the best for our students, so I want to thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck, Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzitsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Cookta?
Yes. Mr. Kuzitsky, will you read the testimony?
Yes. Testimony by friend Mrs. Betty Jean Unglaub. Hold on. Whereas Betty Jean Unglaub has penned her resignation as manager of accounts effective March first, twenty-twelve, and has signified her intention of retiring from active service, and whereas Mrs. Unglaub has worked as business office secretary and manager of accounts in the Nutley Public Schools for a period of thirty-seven years, and whereas through the years, Mrs. Unglaub has exemplified the finest qualities of the profession at all times, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mrs. Unglaub its deep appreciation of her long and faithful service, and extends to her best wishes for continued health and happiness, and be further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of this meeting and a copy presented to Mrs. Unglaub, as a move.
Second. Discussion.
I would like to just have a little bit of discussion, I, I've known, uh, you know Unglaub since my past tenure on the board, and, and I probably think that just listing two of her services, a business office secretary and manager of accounts, there, there probably is not enough room on the paper to list the job that she did here, and I, I know she's totally missed, and, um, she was always a pleasant person.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck, Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzitsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Cookta?
Yes. Hearing of citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please always remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person, if you speak, please step forward.
Good evening, everybody, Converly Donahue, twenty-seven Raymond Avenue. I understand that the board has, uh, finally gotten their, um, candidates in order, and you're going to begin the screening process for a new director of special services, and I think that, uh, it's time to start talking about who that committee is going to be in terms of how the public would like to see it done, and I've been talking as a, as the coordinator of NAPSAT for the autism group, and I'm on the advisory council for CPAP, which is the Special Education Committee, and, um, we've been talking about it for quite some time with Mr. Moner, and I think the time has come to raise it with you guys, that we'd like to see a parent on that board, on that committee, deciding who is going to be, uh, you know, chosen. I know that ultimately we, we won't have all to say, but it would be nice to have some sitting that, and I'd like to see that, uh, you guys consider placing a parent on that committee. If not me, then there are plenty of other qualified people who have already suggested that they would like to do so, but I'm throwing it out there, and I'd just like it to be known that there are many of us who would like to see that happen.
I thank you for your comment, we have a number by number, that's understatement, uh, individuals in the community have expressed interest, and just to clarify, uh, we have parents involved when we, when we select the principals this year, when we select our director of instruction, um, absolutely, that, we try to make sure our committee level is representative of all stakeholders, so parents are absolutely being included.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board, um, my name is Chelsea Woods, I live at one oh five Quinian Avenue. I'm a two thousand seven graduate, if not a school, and I just wanted to inquire as to whether, um, the Latin program would be continued with seventh graders next year. I received word that it was not offered to sixth graders in elementary school, and I just wanted to speak a few words of praise, um, in defense of the Latin program. It ultimately shaped my education as an individual, um, and taught me not only how to translate a language, but quick thinking, problem solving, um, and allowed me to pursue an academic career. I am a Mauna Kamaua graduate of Illinois University, spent a semester abroad at Oxford University, and I'm now enrolled in a master's program, and absolutely none of that would have been possible without Latin education, so I would ask you, in your considerations for next year's budget, that you consider Latin to be integral for, uh, a student's academic experience, as well as the bolstering of test scores, which we received a report on today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terrick Kirk, forty-five Hampton Place, spokesperson for the London Parental Act Network, uh, two things, Mr. President, um, before I come to any Board of Ed meeting, I always go through the agenda, and this time was no different. So I went through the agenda, and I immediately became depressed, not because of anything, but just because of the retirements that I saw. There was one in particular, and I know we talked about some of them who just retired, but there was one person on that retirement list for the teachers, and not that I'm saying that any of the teachers who were retiring, I wish them the best, but one of them was really wonderful, and I, I got an opportunity to actually give her a hug, uh, while I was passing her in the hallway, and that's Mrs. Parata, and I, and I just want to, just say that for a lady who's been, she's just terrific, and she, and I told her, I said, you know what, you are irreplaceable, you really are, so I had that opportunity to give her a hug, I did, and, um, I'm happy to do that, but I want, I just want you to know that she really is special. Okay, um, the second reason why I'm up here is because I, I think I started some trouble this Tuesday, and I wanted to, not here, not here, across the street, I always start trouble somewhere. Um, I went to the commissioners' meeting, and I just wanted to clarify that, put everybody on the same page in regards to what I, I actually said at the commissioners' meeting. I brought up a situation that had come to our attention in regards to a mother who had come to us in regards to a bullying situation. We handled the bullying situation, but in learning about this particular mother, we found out some information about her personal life that had impacted her child. She had had a friend, a family friend, who sexually abused her child, and in learning about this, you know, we were appalled, we were saddened, and we were shocked, and, you know, to come face to face with this, and not to say that I haven't come face to face with this, I've been an educator for thirty-two years, believing I know, but to see how it impacts the family, to see how it impacts this mother, and, and the rest of her family, and the kid, um, so we were thinking that we really wanted to do something for this family, so we've kind of, you know, we're mulling around, like, exactly what should we do, so one of the things, and the mother had said that she really feels isolated by this entire situation, because she went through the court system, that person is now incarcerated, she went through DIFIS, she's in counseling, everything's, you know, working the way it should, however, it's just an isolating feeling for her, she feels like there's nobody else[1753.16] that has gone through this. She can't share this pain because she doesn't know of anyone else. And it has been isolating for her. So we were trying to think of how we can help her. Because, you know, you can't take away that trauma, but you can help her become home again in some way. So we, we put it out there with our very good friends, because we're a network, we have lots of friends. And we have a person who's willing to give us a workshop. We present a workshop for us. She is an associate professor from the Monmouth State University. Her name is Dr. Edina Gwenfo Michel. She's a clinical psychologist. We're really, really lucky. And she happens to be an expert in sexual abuse cases. She's also willing, and I find this quite amazing, to, she said to me, you know what, Tara, listen, if you can get five people, I will put together a support group. And that's exactly what this mother needed. And, you know, in her perspective, this is like God-given. But anyway, I just wanted you to know that since that's happened, and since I've spoken to the commissioners, people have been coming out of the woodwork, guess what, this happened to me, or guess what. And I'm really happy that I kind of went beyond and put everything out on the table in regards to what has happened. And I did make a statement at the commissioners' meeting that, you know, I think if we're not going to sweep things under the rug, if we're going to, you know, address this and to see what we can do about it. I approached Commissioner Petrako, and he's well on board. He wants to do it. He's not into sweeping anything under the rug. He wants to be part of this. He wants to support it. And I just think it's important as a community. And that's why I'm coming to you, just to, you know, just to have you guys support this. Because I think it's good for our parents to know, our residents to know, and for anybody. So we're hoping that we can have this workshop March 27th. I think that's a Tuesday. And we're hoping that we can have it here, if I get it approved. And I'll have all the paperwork before we, I'm not really, this is capoeza. But anyway, but I'm really hoping that we can at least start the ball rolling. That's all we want, is just to present, you know, some help, some support, some guidance to families like this one, and say, listen, you know what? I know how you feel. I'm sorry this happened to you, and we don't want you to feel alone. So that's what I said. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Does not close this portion of the meeting. Old business. Any new business?
Mr. President, very briefly, I stopped by Lincoln School yesterday. Sorry about that, Debbie. I asked for spare time. I stopped by there. But I did want to, I just compliment Phil Niglany and his crew. They did an outstanding job in that week that the children walked from school, removing all the old steam pipes down in that cafeteria. And if you've ever been there, like when I was there, the steam pipes were like this big around. I had to hand cut every one of them to get them out of there. And they put the drop ceiling up and they put the new lighting in there. That really is phenomenal. It was a great improvement and a lot of hard work.
Any other business?
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm shooting old business, but I want to thank Mr. Lazovich because in our report this week, we're getting to the swipe cards in the high school, which is one of the first things I asked about when the superintendent, I first met him the first day. And he's held true to his word. And I want to thank him for that because I can see we're coming very close between Mr. Bemayster and Lazovich and getting that done. So, and Phil, I'm sorry, but that's what I apologize. But, you know, the safety of our students, you know, that's a form of my own thinking many times. So we're probably going to have a secure campus at the high school. Every student, a teacher, will have different access to swipe cards. No doors will be left unlocked anymore. So I think it's a great movement. I want to thank you.
Excellent. Any other, any business? If not, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJASA 10:4-12, now therefore being resolved that the Board of Education resists the closed executive session and discuss the student matters. A further resolve that results of discussion made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session will exist. And so move, in favor?
Aye.
We will return from executive session and return. We hope for your attention.